Week late. I've heard that I postponed one meeting a little too late and the next one a little too early. I've developed some empathy for Dr. Conti when he has to figure out if he has to close school or not. But we didn't have to weather a blizzard tonight, so let's see if we get this done quickly. That number of articles have been pulled. Numbers fourteen through nineteen have been pulled.
Pledge of Allegiance to thirteen. And thirteen? Skilton Lane. Yeah, that's in here. It says pass over.
Thirteen pulled two.
Yeah, thirteen is Skilton Lane. It's in here. I mean, the motions say pass over.
Okay, if you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge the folks who are helping run this thing tonight. Our AV tech, Joe Machado. Our assistant AV tech, Joanne Inzakoba. We have two runners, Andrew Saliba and Lindsay Lavoy. And the man who puts all of this together, Mr. John Porter. So thank you for all of your efforts tonight helping this work. The moderator would entertain a motion to allow us to vote by raising our hand as opposed to sitting. All in favor? At least somebody stand up. Thank you. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. What else do we have to cover here?
In case we don't finish.
Yes, in case we don't finish. I might resign. I might be forced to resign. The moderator would entertain a motion to reconvene on Wednesday date?
First.
Wednesday, February first. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, let's get cranking here. Article one, reports of town officers and committees. We have one that I know of. Ms. Tintoculus, if you would please grace us. Pick your poison for microphones.
Not this one. She's coming up here.
There's one over there.
Okay.
Thank you, moderator, buyer, and town meeting. As many of you know, my name is Melissa. I work as the Economic Development Director. And I just had a quick update from our last town meeting. Article ten, if you recall, town meeting appropriated funds for consulting services to advance the Mall Road and Middlesex Turnpike corridor rezoning initiative. And I just wanted to report since that time, the town was awarded an additional grant to supplement that work from the Community One Stop Program. Also, we made progress on the consultant selection. So we had planning and select board Brenda Rappaport, Jess Sutherland, Nick Priest, Mike Runyon, part of an evaluation team. And we selected Ted Probitz. It's a community planning and community design team. And with that, over the next six, nine months, you'll be hearing from us. We'll be planning some community forums. We'll be engaging with different members of the town meeting, the business community, property owners. And I just wanted to let folks know where we are with these things, also because at the end of this process, through this kind of consensus building process, we're hoping to bring it back to you, town meeting, for a proposal for you to consider in September 2023. With that, our consultant, we've already started working with him to set up office hours. If you have any questions, or if you have friends that have any questions, every first Wednesday of each month over the next six months, he will hold office hours at town hall meeting, or at town hall. And he'll be in, we haven't located him yet. He'll either be in our office area or down in the basement area, but he will be here from nine to four. And I put on the back table just one sheet of paper that has our contact information, my email, Liz, our planning director's information, as well as Ted's information. So feel free to drop in on those times or email him. And at this point, that's all I had. So thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Melissa. That was an update, just to let you keep people informed. It was not an opportunity to discuss. I should have mentioned that beforehand. I believe that's the only report this evening. Is anybody I missed? All right, on to article two. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee. And it is as printed in the warrant for Burlington signage regulations.
Planning board report.
Planning board report. I guess not.
You can't assess it if you don't have one.
She's right there, Elizabeth.
The planning board voted in favor of this, so they were all unanimously in favor. There were concerns regarding how it would be administered, but it was a seven-zero in favor vote.
Thank you. Selectmen on this one?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Select Board voted four-zero on this.
Thank you. Is someone going to speak on this article? Someone from the board, from the select board speaking on this?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I believe we have some slides for this to accompany the conversation. So the purpose of the amendment really is because the select board kept driving through the center of town, as I think many of us do, and felt that the two, as I've been calling them, janky wooden posts that adorn the corner of the common at Cambridge Street and Bedford Street are not representative of the town. And so we started asking questions and discussing what it would take to have a more modern 21st century sign in that space. And so the purpose here really is to upgrade the post and banner system to a digital display and elevate communication to a 21st century standard. You can see our current sign is just two wooden sign posts for banners to hang on, as I've already said, at the corner of Bedford and Cambridge. Our challenges, right now, we can only do one message or banner at a time. There's increasing demand for usage, right? We have many town events happening currently. We have a lot of not-for-profits within town that would also like to take advantage of the space, which leads to conflicts. And of course, with a banner, there is poor visibility and exposure due to the elements, such as nighttime, wind, rain, et cetera. Benefits, a digital sign, an electronic message board, as select board member Runyon likes to call it, would allow for multiple notifications at any given time, programmed and controlled remotely from town hall, have a pre-scheduled or provide real-time updates should there be an emergency of any kind. It allows, like I said, I'm getting ahead of myself, it makes it versatile for emergency notifications. It allows us to take the current DPW Highway sign, which is across the street on Simon's Park property, and move it to someplace else in town for more visibility of messaging. So currently, our proposed sign, and this is just the digital display itself, would be a four-by-eight sign at a nine-millimeter resolution. Don't ask me what nine-millimeter means. It's the resolution, as far as I know at this point. The overall sign aesthetic would be meant to mimic the aesthetic of the rest of the town hall campus. So you can see the brick bottom with the white top roof, if you will, and the pillars along the sides. And this would be funded through ARPA dollars. And so thus far, the process has been that we have had conversations with town council to deal with legal logistics. The police department determined safety in the area. We have been in front of planning, ZBRC, and land use collaboration through the last couple of months on the wording of the amendment and how we would, you know, facilitate the sign. Support from recommissioned town clerk, border health, library trustees. And then for the design that you just saw, we did pull together an advisory group comprised of two select board members, two planning board members, a ZBRC member and a ZBA member as well, which is how we got to where you just saw. And so this approval would allow us to finalize that design, finalize the use policy, which we have a current, first draft of the town council has kindly provided us, work with the vendor and town departments on the specifics, and get that DPW Highway sign moved. And that's everything. So back to you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Zoning bylaw review committee, Ms. Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Shari Ellis, Chair of the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. We did take a vote on this after one meeting of discussion, and the vote was actually eight-zero. I just wanted to take a minute with moderator's permission to state for the new members, anyway, what the zoning bylaw review committee does. We actually focus on the actual text of the amendment with what is presented to us and try and make it as clear, concise, and conform to things like the master plan and the mass general laws. With the discussion that evening, there were multiple versions presented to us. And there were some of the members on the ZBRC, which are town meeting members also, that had multiple concerns that we raised with the select board. And some of those were about the safety, about the actual design of the sign and the size of it. There is a sign maximum six feet by 10 feet, and we're concerned that the sign as presented would not fit within that dimension and the location of it with the motorists and pedestrians as well. So we did urge the select board, and they did create a committee to work with that. And we urged them to come back with a more complete design. And you see what's before you, but I myself don't see the actual details of the sign and the readability and things like that. So that's what I just wanted to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. I will open up to the body for discussion with their questions. Yes, sir, Mr. Webb.
Land use vote.
Oops, planned use. Excuse me. Yes, go ahead.
Hi. We certainly think having an electronic sign on town property is a good idea, but we voted against this zero-eight-one because we didn't think the proposed revisions and what we had to vote on were very specific enough. And as Shari just pointed out, things like the size of the sign, distractions to drivers, the safety issue, who will control, who uses the sign, how will it be used? We didn't think those arguments were discussed very well in what we had to vote on, so we voted against it. But again, in general, we think this is a good idea, and maybe the signed bylaw can be amended. I don't know. But that was our vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Questions? Is that Ms. Angelo up at the back?
Yep.
You're straining my eyesight, Pat.
Pat Angelo, precinct five. Where is that big yellow ugly thing going to go? You said you're going to move it, so where are you going to move it to?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The idea would be that that sign would be able to be deployed in another area of town to provide notifications, you know, related to flu clinics or emergency snowstorms, the typical messages that are on there now. We'd be able to utilize the new sign in the center of town and then utilize that piece of equipment at another busy intersection in town so we could get, potentially get the word out to more people about, you know, an emergency event.
Okay, but what intersection of town are you even considering?
It hasn't been determined yet.
Ms. Byer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kathy Byer, precinct two. I am the person from ZBRC who also is on the subcommittee of the select board. And I asked during that meeting about safety in that intersection. And I was told that, Mr. Sagorino, you want to explain what you said, or do you want me to sum it up?
Mr. Sagorino.
Ms. Byer, I'd give you a shot, but I guess I'll just answer for myself now.
That's good.
You can correct me as to what I said, but when the select board came up with this idea, the first people we talked to was the police department traffic division. And they determined that it was not a distraction in that location for this type of sign. And we are committed to working with them as the sign is developed in determining brightness, number of times per day that the sign will change, and anything else that could potentially be a distraction to a driver. Is that?
That sounds like it summed it up.
Thank you.
Thank you. And what I wanted to know, I'm sure that there have been studies done on this, and I don't know about other people, but I drive through there and I am looking up and I see a light. I see an arrow. There are pedestrians crossing. There is oncoming traffic. There's traffic coming from two other ways. And then there is the sign. Now, when it's the sign hanging across the post and it's just the banner, I can glance at it and tell what it says right away. There's not a problem. I have concerns about the safety of a backlit sign that is in the easement of the walkway aimed into the main part of the intersection that is going to, and that has changing messages, even if they're looking at seven to 15 seconds. I am concerned about what happens as far as a distraction to drivers going through the intersection. It may be that everything is okay, but during the meeting, I was invited to go look up things online myself. I looked through some of the things, one of the reports that I found is from 2009. I was not finding reports on signs that were that close up to the traffic and aimed into an intersection. And I want to say that with the most recent weather going through, when we are getting into early nightfall, and then you have extra lights bouncing off of the pavement, off of wet pavement, I am concerned that that becomes an additional distraction as well. And so I'm not prepared to vote on this yet. Perhaps somebody will have a reason why it has to be passed at this town meeting. I'm in favor of having changeable electronic signs. I don't know that's the best location to have them. And so I would like to make a motion to postpone voting on this particular article tonight. Thank you.
Is there a second? Discussion on the motion. Ms. Ellis.
Shari Ellis, I'll speak as a town meeting member. I'm certainly in favor of postponing this unless there is a dire urgency to pass this tonight for some reason. This is the first time I'm actually hearing of how it's going to be funded with the rescue plan funds. That concerns me. The fact that, as shown, that sign will need a variance from the bylaw. So we're going to create a bylaw that we already need a variance for. And so I just think this isn't ready for prime time yet. And I think by postponing it, we're not hurting anything, as far as I know. No one's told me that it's dire urgent. So I urge you to postpone it.
Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The concerns are valid. I think that these are all things that the select board would take up, assuming that we have this passed this evening, and we would have these conversations, make sure that it's safe for the intersection. If it's not, we're not going to put a sign there. We wouldn't endanger people just for the sake of having a sign there. So, you know, your vote tonight on the amendment would allow us to move forward with the project and do the proper research necessary, cart before the horse, right? We figured we'd come to you folks first, make sure that we were all bought in on the zoning amendment change before we went and did all the work. Thank you.
Ms. Willard.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sally Willard, precinct four. One of the things I was concerned about when I saw the image, I saw a great, long brick base and a relatively small-sized sign. And my concern is, especially for seniors, the readability. And I think that we need some greater consideration about what the structure will be. So I support postponing this simply because I think that we need a better definition before approving it, just for the safety concerns as well as for readability. Thank you.
Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So it is a four-foot by eight-foot sign. And as we dive into the policy, we will work with the vendor to determine appropriate letter sizing to ensure that folks are not straining, to make sure the right size, the right point size for the font is appropriate for the distance folks will be reading it at. But that's, again, that's a policy discussion the select board will have. Anybody who's interested in joining us is more than welcome to.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Cormier, precinct six. I really, I think what we're hearing here tonight is everyone seems to be very open to this type of approach as far as the sign, but there are just as far too many unanswered questions and concerns right now. And all due respect, we really don't need to pass this in order for you to sit down with the select board and discuss issues that you've heard here tonight. There is no, there's no reason for this. So I'm in favor of postponing it. I would hope that the board would sit down after hearing what some of the concerns have been here tonight. I don't believe, certainly don't believe that, you know, many people here are necessarily against it, but there's just too much right now and not enough answers. So I would hope that the select board would sit down with what they've heard, come back following town meeting, if not back in September. Thank you.
Does this mean it'll be non-conforming the minute goes up?
Mr. Kelly, please announce yourself. Identify yourself.
Jack Kelly, precinct seven.
Thank you.
Does this mean that the sign will be non-conforming the minute goes up? And what complications does that make if the sign needs to be changed? Would they have to go back before Board of Appeal?
I think town council would like to comment on that.
The purpose of the change in the bylaw is to make what is being proposed legal under the bylaw. So it doesn't require variance, and it won't be non-conforming. It will be legal under the bylaw.
Mr. Sinessi.
Thank you, moderator. Adam Sinessi, precinct one. Move the question to postpone.
The question has been moved. All those in favor of moving the question? Ms. Angelo, point of information. Please use the microphone.
Pat Angelo, precinct five. What is this rescue something plan that this money is coming from? Never heard of it before. And we're going to be voting on this, and I don't even know what this rescue money
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Denizio, Assistant Town Administrator. So the planned use of funding source for this is the American Rescue Plan Act. This is, we've referred to it in front of this body as ARPA in the past. The town got about $8.5 million worth of funds from that, and we have until midway through FY 2025 to spend it. We've updated the select board a few times on some funding we've used to date, but the bulk of that money is still there.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of moving the question? Raise your hands. All those opposed? There's a clear two-thirds majority in favor of moving the question. So that brings us to the article. All those in favor of the article?
No, this is postponing, this is postponing the question. There's a motion to postpone.
Oh, it's a good thing someone's keeping track here. Okay. We have a motion to postpone. All those in favor of that motion? All those opposed? That motion passes. Brings us to article three, to see if the town will, well, let's make sure I get the Article three, to replenish the reserve fund. It is as printed in the warrant, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash to the Budget Line Item 87 Reserve Fund, the sum of $100,000. Ways and Means? Mr. Heiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You said the reserve fund is controlled by a vote of Ways and Means. It's designed for basically urgent matters and is used fairly rarely. In fact, in FY 23, we have not used any of it. So the standard procedure the town's been using for a number of years is that at the beginning of the year, $200,000 is put in as part of the regular budget. And then in January town meeting, after free cash is certified, we bring it up to $300,000. And since no money was spent, that means adding an extra $100,000 now. Any money that is not spent from the reserve fund is just turned back to free cash at the end of the year. Ways and Means supported this twelve-zero-zero.
Thank you, Mr. Heiler. Mr. Denizio, are you speaking on this?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I can't talk about it. This is something that you are used to seeing every January. It's an annual warrant article. Mr. Heiler explained it perfectly, so.
Thank you.
Select Board voted four-zero in favor.
Discussion from the body? Any questions? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? It passes clearly with the two-thirds. Anyway, the motion, so that article three passes. Transfer from free cash to stabilization fund, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash. from free cash to the sum of $230,000 to the stabilization fund. Mr. Heiler, Ways and Means?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The stabilization fund is controlled by town meeting, requiring a two-thirds vote for any use of that fund. It has been lightly used in the past, and we entered the year with slightly more than $10 million in the stabilization fund. In this past September town meeting, town meeting voted to use $150,000 of that for a police station study. And in addition, voted to spend $80,000 for the form-based code creation article, which was for evaluating zoning in the Mall Road Middlesex Turnpike area. Typically, these things would have been spent from free cash, but because it wasn't certified, we used stabilization instead. Now that free cash was certified on November 2nd, the, this article is to basically just replenish the money that was spent out of stabilization from free cash. So the total of those two items is the $230,000, and Ways and Means supported this 12-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Heiler. From the Selectmen?
The Moderator, Select Board voted 4-0-0.
Thank you. Any comment from anyone? Mr. Sagorino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think Mr. Heiler covered all the details, but we have for any questions.
Thank you. Questions from the body? Mr. Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Cormier, Precinct 6. I know this is repetitive. I do it every year. When we do wind up making these transfers, could someone please give us an update as to what the current values of the free cash and stabilization funds are? Please.
Mr. Denizio, please.
Moderator. As Mr. Heiler said, the stabilization account opened the year with about $10.2 million in it. We used $200,000. We'll put that $200,000 back, it'll be about the same. Free cash was certified this year at just under $25 million. These warrants today total just over $1.3 million. So there'd be $23,600 if they were all approved.
Further questions from the body? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Article 5. Transfer from free cash to water stabilization fund. It is as printed in the warrant, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $980,678 to the water stabilization fund. Mr. Heiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Back when, back several years ago, town meeting authorized a multi-year plan to have connections to MWRA. As part of funding that process, water rates were, are increasing at $10 per year. That money goes into the general fund and then when free, and then goes to free cash when that's certified. And now that it's in free cash, that money is being transferred to the water stabilization fund, which is where we wanted it to be all along. So this is basically an accounting maneuver to, or accounting transfer to cause the water revenues to end up in the water stabilization account where we wanted it all along, so it can be used towards those MWRA expenses. Ways and Means supported this 12-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Heiler. Mr. Sagorino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, Mr. Heiler covered it well. Typically, what you'll see in May as we contemplate the budget for Public Works will be taking money out of the water stabilization. So put it in in January, take it out in May. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. Further questions on this article? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Article 6 is to fund the Burlington Municipal Employees Association contract, and the article is as printed in the warrant, see if we'll transfer from negotiated settlement account the sum of $204,568. Mr. Heiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Burlington Municipal Employee Association covers about 100 town employees. The administration has negotiated and agreed with a new contract for them for the typical three-year contract that covers FY '23, '04, and '05. Negotiated increases each year would be 2.5% for each of the three years. In addition, there are some minor step adjustments. This would be funded from the negotiated settlements account, which is already part of the budget that was approved, so it's not increasing our budget, it's already accounted for. Just in general, you'll see several contracts coming up here that are all funded from this negotiated settlements account. And due to our most excellent projections by the administration, the negotiated settlements account has covered all of these, so there won't be any increase to the budget, it's all covered within that account. Ways and Means has supported this 12-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Heiler. Mr. Sagorino or Mr. Denizio, anything further to add?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I believe Mr. Heiler cheated off my test and said everything that I was going to. We did have some slides that we could go through if you wanted to go through all three of these articles at once.
Sure. But then Joan Heiler won't get to talk as much.
I'm happy to sit back down. Well, I could start. We're going to talk through Articles 6, 7, and 8 together. They'll sound the same. So we have two union contracts, two collective bargaining agreements with the final two units that hadn't settled till now, so this will mean that all of our bargaining units have settled contracts through 2025. So that's a great thing, and I want to thank the unions for all of their work. It isn't an easy process, and they're very, very good to work with. Well, another, yeah, I didn't know if the slides were. As Mr. Heiler pointed out, it's important to note that this is not an increase in the budget. This money has already been budgeted in a different line, and what we're asking for tonight is just to transfer the money from that line into the appropriate budgets. So the first one, what we call BMEA, which is the Burlington Municipal Employees Association, as Mr. Heiler said, has just over 100 employees. It's a three-year contract for, that will cover this year, FY '23, next year, and the following year. The economic terms of the contract are going to sound very familiar, they're the same as, or very similar to what we've come before you and had approved for the other three bargaining units, which is a 2.5% increase, wage adjustment with some small increases between steps. For this unit, there was some restructuring or regrading of a couple of positions, and there was an increase in the funding pool for education reimbursement. There's a $5,000 pool for the whole unit, and it was increased to $7,500. There was also some clarifications and updates to the language around vacation, holiday, and overtime. Specifically for vacation was when someone could use, or how long they had to use the week when they gained an extra week, from one week to two weeks, two weeks to three weeks, and so on. For holiday, it was to add Juneteenth to the recognized holiday list. And for overtime, it was to add a provision where someone could be, could accept an overtime if they were on a leave day that day for a specific type of leave. It was also able to incorporate a cybersecurity policy into this agreement as we did with the other units. This is coming from the FY '23 negotiated settlements account, as I said, and the amount is listed there at just over $204,000. Article 7 is for the DPW, which is a Department of Public Works contract. This covers 47 employees, all in the DPW and one in the FIRE, who's the EVT worker. You'll see that the terms are very similar, including the vacation, holiday, OT, cybersecurity language. There was an increase on the on-call rate for water and sewer folks, and also for the tools stipend for the mechanics. You'll see same coming from the FY '23 negotiated settlements, at a sum just over $94,000. Article 8 is the AMP, which is the Administrative and Professional Compensation Plan. This is about 42 employees. This is your department heads, managers, other professional staff that are non-union. This isn't a recognized union, and that's why we come every year for this. This is anybody that works over 20 hours in those positions I was just talking about. And they do negotiate their compensation plan collectively, but they're not a union technically. So this is a little different, 2% increase on the salary schedule with some increases in between steps, and you can see the total is for just under $135,000.
Thank you, Mr. Denizio. Okay, questions on Article 6? Mr. Boyven, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, Precinct 1. I just had one question, Mr. Denizio. You mentioned something about overtime, and I didn't quite understand what you said, something about overtime, collecting overtime when you're on leave?
Mr. Denizio?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sorry, Mr. Boyven, if that wasn't clear. It was, the change was in the language that would allow someone to accept an overtime shift if they were on a specific type of leave that day. So after their shift was over, for instance, if someone had to take their child to a doctor's appointment, and was on a sick day that day, but an overtime came about that night, they could accept that shift if their leave day was over.
Anything further on this? Seeing nothing? Put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Looks like it passes unanimously. Article 7. To fund the Department of Public Works contract, and it is as printed in the warrant, to transfer from negotiated settlement account the sum of $94,281. Mr. Heiler, please.
Mr. Denizio took the words right out of my mouth. Ways and Means supported this 12-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Denizio. Any questions on this article? Ms. Angelo?
Pat Angelo, Precinct 5. This is for all three articles. With the backup material we got, it said backup will be distributed after January 9th, and we didn't get that information. And we're getting it tonight, and this is what the school department does to us all the time, and it drives me crazy. And I hate to vote when I'm just getting the information the night of the town meeting. And I wish you would send it out again and not do what the school department does to us all the time.
Thank you, Ms. Angelo.
She doesn't have email.
Mr. Denizio?
Ms. Angelo, I'm sorry that it wasn't in the backup. We hadn't ratified the contact by that, contract by that date, but I do believe it was emailed out to all town meeting members shortly after January 9th, a couple of weeks ago, January 18th, as a matter of fact.
However, not every, not every town meeting member has email.
And it went to her in the mail.
So it went, should have, should have gone to Pat in the mail. Anything further on this question? Seeing nothing, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. To fund the Administrative and Professional Compensation Plan, and it is as printed in the warrant, to transfer from negotiated settlement account the sum of $134,934. Mr. Heiler?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just highlight two things here. Most of the contracts are three-year contracts. This is a one-year contract, so you'll see this each year, just like the part-time employees. The other thing I'll note is something that the town administrator had brought up, which is that it's becoming increasingly more difficult to hire people into these positions because the compensation is starting to lag a bit from where it needs to be. So there's currently a compensation review being done and survey of related positions in other towns to see if there's something that needs to be done there. So you may see something about that in the coming year. Ways and Means supported this 12-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Heiler. Questions on this? Ms. Saltzman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Myrna Saltman, Precinct 2. As we're discussing this article, and you'll be, the Ways and Means will be working on the budget for the May town meeting, at one point, we used to get the department budgets broken out. We knew, looking at the warrant, what the director made, what the assistants made, et cetera. And now it's all lumped together in one huge sum. So we really don't know what anyone is making in this town. While, though they deserve it, it's just an unknown quantity. So I would ask that you please consider that, your committee, when you're forming the budgets for our May town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saltman. Anything further? I see a hand up over there.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christine Herter-Warren, Precinct 4. Point of information, for the first two, does it mean that all of it comes out of negotiated FY '23, even though it's for three years? Or does it repeat in our budgets, one at a time as it hits? I probably should know that as a town meeting member, but I, but I don't. Thank you.
Mr. Denizio, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the, the transfer is just to cover this year. The amount for next year will be submitted with the budget that comes to the town meeting and the same for the following year.
Anything further? Seeing none, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Cybersecurity Assessment. It is as printed in the warrant. Mr. Heiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article is to provide for an outside review of cybersecurity practices, both for town systems and school systems, so it's cover everything across the town. As, as you know, cybersecurity has been a real issue. A number of towns have even been held hostage by people taking over their systems. So $25,000 is short money compared to what could happen if something bad were to happen with town. So it's good to have an outside person's view of this, to make sure that we're following best practices. They'll review what we're doing and make improvement recommendations. This will be done by a vendor from the state bid list. Ideally, this would have been presented in May with the other warrant articles. It wasn't quite ready, but it was felt that this is an important enough issue that we didn't want to wait until next May. So given that it was ready now, the thought was to put it before you right now. Ways and Means supported this 12-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Do we have a selectmen vote?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Select Board voted 4-0-0 in favor.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Moran to speak, to speak on the article and on behalf of the committee.
Steve Moran, Precinct 4, also the Chair of the ISAC Committee. The town and schools have taken a strong step forward with the adoption of a cybersecurity policy. However, cybersecurity protection requires that the policy be transformed into concrete action for attack prevention and recovery. One essential action is the creation by every town and school department of, of an incident response plan and the rehearsal of these plans, such that if we experience an attack, our response and recovery will be fast and effective. The funded, the funding provided by this warrant article will move all town entities forward in creating these plans and addressing gaps in current defense and recovery measures. It's not only for cyber, cybersecurity, but since data is our livelihood these days, it also is helpful in the event of a natural disaster or inadvertent deletion of data. The ISAC voted 7-0 to approve this warrant article, and we urge the town meeting to adopt it tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Questions on this article?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Cormier, Precinct 6. If I may, Mr. Moderator, through, if someone could speak on the ISAC, will they be working directly or close with this plan, or whoever this consultant will be used?
Mr. Moran, please.
The, the town IT department and the department heads will be working closely on a day-to-day basis with the CyberQ company, which is the vendor from the state contract bid. The ISAC committee is in oversight role, and we work closely with the IT department, and so we will be overseeing the process and following up on action items, as well as probably attending a couple of their sessions. We've met with the CyberQ a couple of times over the course of this contract bid, and we have great confidence that they will give us what we need.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Murphy, Precinct 5. Just lost my pen. Quick question for Steve. Is this just to review procedures around if something goes wrong? Or is this going to be a recommendation perhaps to go spend $250,000 on this software product for the whole town to use? Or, you know, what's the deliverable? Is it, is it potentially technology to be purchased too?
At this point in time, the $25,000 is to pay for the CyberQ to come in, talk with the department heads, and put together an incident response plan. During the course of that, they may identify gaps or things, recommendations that we may need to follow in the future to further secure our systems. At this point in time, the $25,000 is specifically just for that. We don't have any certain funds that we would want to allocate in the future. That's not to say something might not come, but for now, $25,000 is just to fund that plan.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Additional questions? Ms. Prendagast, are you up the back?
Michelle Prendagast, Precinct 5. I'm just wondering, is this $25,000 from this vendor for a finite period of time, or is it for an ongoing amount of time? Have you established that?
Mr. Moran.
The $25,000 will cover a year's worth of the contract, so we will have a year to put together this incident response plan, meet with the department heads, and we will have access in a database of these plans for that year. We potentially could re-up that at the end of the year, but the, we could also just take the data offline and put it in our own database. So at this point in time, it's more important that we put together the incident response plan.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Ashakie, Precinct 6. Question, do we have a dedicated cybersecurity personnel on our IT team today?
Mr. Moran, please.
Currently, today, we have one person who's assigned half-time to that position, and we, at the May town meeting last year, allocated an additional stipend to hire a part-time IT worker to backfill that particular role. The other 20 hours that was previously covered by the IT person, that role hasn't been covered, hired yet, but the, we only have 20 hours per week, and that's dedicated to cybersecurity.
So the $25,000 that you're asking is really to educate them, get more softwares, or how, how does it, because don't the cybersecurity personnel already know the response and action, and that's a part of the training and the job?
Mr. Moran.
So there is additional education that's part of this contract, but if you, if you think about what we're trying to do, if you look at the fire department and you have the, look at the police department, they have response plans for all sorts of types of incidents, whether a cat is stuck in a tree, or there's a major issue somewhere at the mall, what have you, they have these response plans, and they practice them on a regular basis. Cybersecurity is something that's similar to that. What we're trying to do is identify these potential actions that could be taken, identify where our data is and how best to protect it. And if something were to happen, what is the way that we would recover? What is the way that we would continue to operate town's information systems? And how would we, you know, and what would be the time to recovery? So what we're trying to do is put together those incident response plans that the police and fire department have curated over the course of many hundreds of years. This would be a first step in towards doing that for the, for cybersecurity.
So forgive me, but I'm just asking this because shouldn't we already have a plan and response for cybersecurity, because this can happen anytime? Do, do we have something accounted for today?
We have, what we're trying to do is ensure that we have, so we have some sets of procedures today, but what we want to do is ensure that we have the right set of procedures and augment anything where we have gaps. So this is similar to what the police and fire department would do on a normal yearly basis to recover those. For cybersecurity, we would be doing a much more in-depth review.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Seeing none? Put it to a vote, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Five-year municipal solid waste collection slash disposal contract. It is as printed in the warrant. The article to see if, if the town will vote to authorize the select board to enter into a contract agreement of up to five years. Mr. Eiler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sadly, our really good five-year solid waste deal is coming to a close at the end of this June, so there's a need to renegotiate that. In order, the select board can only negotiate up to three-year contracts unless they get town meeting approval. So the approve, so this vote is to give them authorization basically to go for a five-year deal, which would lead to a more cost-effective solution. The administration's working with Tingsborough and Tewksbury to get an even better deal with a multi-town arrangement, perhaps. We should expect to see a large increase in May in the operating budget, because that will be using whatever new contract is negotiated, and we already know that, that the amounts that we're being charged are, in some cases, below the actual costs that the vendors incurring, so it's not going to continue anymore. At any rate, this is, so in May, that is when you'll be voting on what the actual contract amount is. This is just to authorize the ability to negotiate a five-year contract. So Ways and Means supported this 12-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Mr. Sagarino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As John said, we'll be negotiating the contract through the spring, and we want to have the ability to do a three or a five, depending upon what is the most beneficial to the town, for whatever it's worth, the last two trash contracts were five-year contracts, so we have, do have a suspicion that that may be the most cost-effective contract, but word of caution, we, we do anticipate in May that we're going to have a substantial increase on trash. We just came off of a very, very favorable contract. As John indicated, the trash contractor was losing money on us for, for most of the contracts, so there's a lot of upheaval in the market, and we do anticipate a substantial increase on trash. Thank you.
Questions on this from the body?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Cormier, Precinct 6. I know this is the solid waste and disposal, and it also mentioned the recycling. Is the yard waste part of this contract?
Mr. Sagarino.
Yes, it is.
Just a word, I've, I've been, year after year, I've been getting a little bit hotter under the collar about the quality of, of the pickup with, with some of the yard waste, and I've been hearing from my neighbors, year after year after year. If we're going to enter into that negotiation, could somebody please address the issue? If you're going to tell me to put my trash out on a Thursday, and I put my Thursday trash out, and it doesn't get picked up for two weeks, I get a little annoyed. That's been happening for many years now when it comes to the yard waste. So if someone could please address that, so we're not dealing with this year after year? It really tends to actually become, become an eyesore when you drive through town, and all you see are these yard waste bags, and we're not talking a couple, we're not talking a bin, talking 20, we're talking 30, bags sitting out on the road for sometimes a couple of weeks, if not three weeks at a, at a time, and it's not acceptable. So I'd really like someone to, to, to bring that. If you're going to tell me it's every two weeks, fine, I'll put it out every two weeks, but when you tell me there's a certain stretch, and I put it out there, and it just sits there and sits there and sits there, it's, it's not acceptable, and that's not the best use of my tax money. Thank you.
Dave Webb, Precinct 7. For solid waste, this, well, I think all the pickup, including the recycling, right now is done by Republic, and we've had, maybe, well, he mentioned the yard waste problem. There have been other times when they've been delayed, but I think it's more in other towns, Reading and so forth, has had all kinds of problems with Republic. So do you, are you, are you considering this just for Republic, or you, can you really go out and, and try to get a different vendor, at least search for other vendors who, who might be able to do this? I know it's a very limited set of people that would do this, I'm sure.
Mr. Sagarino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, there are only a couple of vendors in the business, and we will be considering all of them, but certainly is a possibility, possibility we may end up with Republic again as well.
Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Moderators. Sally Willard, Precinct 4. This is just a related question. I think I've heard that incinerators are no longer in use in Massachusetts, and I'm wondering if, if, if we've lost that incinerator that took our trash for so many years. Thank you.
Mr. Sagarino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To my knowledge, we still taking it to the same incinerator we have for, for many years
Ms. Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Warren, Precinct 4. Point of, of information, I guess, to kind of understand why the decision was made to band with Tewksbury and Tingsborough, they're not adjacent to our town, why it, it's, we didn't go with Woburn, Bilrika, Lexington, Bedford, the towns that are closer. Thank you.
Mr. Sagarino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Those are the towns that were willing to partner with us. At the time, we've been partnering with them on bids for several cycles now, and by acting as a larger unit, we're able to get a better price for the entire group.
Anything further? Seeing nothing, let's put this to a vote, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Let's move on to Article 11, Transportation Infrastructure Fund. Article 11 is as printed, has been moved and seconded and is as printed in the warrant, to see if the sun, the town will transfer the sum of $14,830,000.
Fourteen. Well, fourteen thousand.
Oh, well.
You tried to get through.
Well, let's see if we can reread this number. $14,830, 830 and 40 cents. From Receipts Reserved for Appropriation Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund. Mr. Eiler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Apparently, the moderator is very enthusiastic about this program. The, so this is regarding our ride-sharing program. So the, the way it's working is that for every ride that originates in Burlington, there's a 20 cent surcharge added to that. Half of that money goes to the state, and the other half comes back to Burlington. This 14,000 is the half that's coming back to Burlington, so a little quick math says that's 148,000 rides that occurred over the course of a year. And it's expected that that will be increasing with the pandemic hopefully settling down and people getting used to the program. Just for reference, in, in calendar year 21, it costs about $50,000 every half year to subsidize the rides. So this is, this is not intended to make it break even, but it's intended to help cover part of that subsidy. So the way the money flows is that this 10 cents per ride comes into a reserve receipts account, and then this vote here is to move it from that account into the Transportation Infrastructure Fund, which in turn can be used to help offset the subsidies for our ride-sharing program. Ways and Means supported this 12-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Mr. Sagarino or Mr. D'Nizio, anything to say?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this is the, the 10 cents that the town gets from ride shares picking up in town. We get it all in a lump sum here, as Mr. Eiler said. We're requesting it be transferred to the town's lift program, which run over by the COA, and just to give town meeting some perspective on that, we're now averaging between 700 or 800 rides a month from that new updated program that was put in a couple of years ago. Started off slow at the beginning of COVID, but it certainly ramped up, and we're getting calls on it constantly for more folks to, to, to try to get signed up for that program, so it is, it is working well. Thank you.
Questions from the body? Microphone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Myrna Saltman, Precinct 2. Before our wonderful duly-elected town meeting members leave this auspicious room this evening, could you please tell us how many of the 126 are here in the reel? Thank you.
There's enough for a quarrel.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six, Myrna. Questions on this article? Eileen, yes. Ms. Sikler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eileen Sikler, Precinct 4. So, Mr. Eiler, did you say that we were spending about $100,000 over 12 months? Is that right? What's the balance in the account right now?
Mr. D'Nizio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We started the year with just under $199,000. We've spent about $56,000 and transferred in from the operating budget $50,000. So we have about $193,000. That's as of mid-January.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none? We'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to Article 12, Acquisition of Land by Donation on Peach Orchard Road. Land use?
That is two-thirds. That is two-thirds.
Land use, have any comments on this? Acquiring this land?
Yes, Land Use voted 8-0-0 in favor of this acquisition.
Thank you. Mr. Sagarino or D'Nizio or somebody, Mr. Priest?
Select Board, 0-0 in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Mr. Sagarino.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Several months ago, we were approached by a resident of the town who offered to donate a couple of parcels if there was any value to the town. There were two of them that were of interest to departments, the one for this article on Peach Orchard Road. And I apologize, the assessor's map didn't make it into the backup, but it's up at the back, but it was emailed out to you as well. But this is the island in between old Peach Orchard Road and Peach Orchard Road. As we submitted it around to departments, Public Works thought that the property had value to the town in the fact that we would have water and sewer infrastructure running under there. And we felt that in the future, if we had to utilize a parcel to make repairs, it's a lot easier if we own the land than if somebody else owns the land. So with your vote here tonight, you know, we'll get all the paperwork taken care of so that we can have that land be part of the town of Burlington and under the jurisdiction of Public Works Department.
Thank you, Mr. Sagarino. Questions from the body? Ms. Angelo.
Pat Angelo, Precinct 5. Have you looked into these parcels carefully so that we're not inheriting like an ecological nightmare after we accept these parcels?
Mr. Sagarino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Our departments did review the parcels, just as so the body's aware. The next one has been withdrawn. There was a title issue on the ownership of it, so that we won't be moving forward with that one. But in terms of the Peach Orchard one, I think many people are familiar with that parcel. It's a relatively large strip island compared to a lot of the strips that are available around town. So we do feel that it is a good parcel for the town.
Further questions from the body? Okay, let's vote on this, then. All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous vote. Article 13 has been withdrawn. All the others have been withdrawn. I hear a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor? Opposed? See you in May.